I'll be recorded.
Is Councilmember Rob online?
Yes.
Uh, there he is. Very good. I call to order the Hazlet City Council meeting Monday, March 7th, 2022 at 7:01 PM. There is a quorum present in the chambers is Mayor Protem Morrow, Councilmember Nahera, Councilmember Clark, and Councilmember Ricketts. On video conference is Councilmember Rob. If you would, uh, bow your heads, offer the invocation, and then stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Father in heaven, we give you all the glory and honor. We thank you for the many blessings that we have. We ask that your mighty arm sweep across and visit with Vladimir Putin of Russia and bring this to a peaceful and if possible. We ask this in your precious name and Jesus. Amen. Now, you see what's happening over there in Ukraine? It just gives new words, new meaning to our pledge. It's just amazing. Uh, item three is presentation like to invite Mr. Or excuse me, Dr. Ryder Warren, uh, Superintendent Northwest ISD. And, uh, for those who don't know, Dr. Warren is retiring at the end of the school year, correct? I can only imagine.
Well, Mayor Council, thank you for allowing me to come again. It's been way, way too long since I've seen you in person. Um, and we're blessed to be able to meet in person again. So I appreciate you allowing me to do this. Uh, two purposes for my visit tonight. I want to give you a district update, kind of tell you where we are right now. And then just, you know, I'm, I am making my last lap around the district. I'm visiting several city councils these next couple, three weeks. And, uh, you know, just saying, basically just saying thank you. And that's, that's my first slide. Um, you know, as I've always said over these last six years, just thank you for stepping up and, and being a community leader. Uh, we need, we need those kind of people in all of our communities. And you've done this for Haslett. And we just really appreciate, we appreciate you. We appreciate the partnership we've always had. And so just thank you. Thank you for serving. Uh, sometimes leadership does not come with a lot of thank yous, and we want to make sure that you know that we do appreciate you. Here's our group at the, uh, at the school district. Um, uh, great districts start with great boards and we've got one. I really do appreciate these seven. Uh, and it's a great mix, you know, uh, Ann Davis Simpson, um, Judy Cobb, Deanne Hatfield, and, uh, Mark Schluter, you know, they are Northwest. Their grandparents went to Northwest High School when this is the only Northwest. And then we have, uh, we have Steve and Lillian and Jennifer. Jennifer is our newest member. She's, uh, she and Steve are parents of the district. So we really do have a good, they have very high expectations for me. They have very high expectations for our staff, uh, because they want what's very best for our crew. Um, I gave you these next several slides because, uh, this is my first ask of you for the night. Um, we operate under a strategic framework, you know, it, it outlines our core beliefs. Uh, it's a vision, you know, when I meet with Tanya and the other staff members, I always go over this strategic framework just to remind people who we are and what we believe in. And this is not something that we as just the eight of us, the seven board members and I came up with. This is actually renewed every four years. We have, uh, this last time, this in the spring of 2018, we had 90 individuals. We had teachers, we had parents, community members, T, uh, principals, most powerful voices were our kids. We had about 15 high school kids. We even had some, some middle school kids thrown in there. And why I'm, why I'm doing this for you, explaining this for you is this coming fall, uh, whoever the new superintendent will be, his or her first big task will be to renew this strategic framework. And I would really love for you guys to think about a representative from the city of Hazlet to be on the committee. Uh, I think we need, we need voices from our, from, from our community leaders. And so, uh, you, you will get a formal invitation to be on this sometime this fall. And I'd really like to think of at least one of you being there to be able to go through this. It takes about three days of work. We'll have an outside facility to come in and help us, but it really does succinctly give us, you know, through 14 different communities in the district, it really gets us some good voices and good opinions about what we ultimately need to be doing for the kids. So we, I'd really appreciate that you think about that and be able to do that. If you've not seen this in a while, this is us, uh, almost 235 square miles. We are now the fastest growing, uh, district in the metroplex. Uh, we've always been hovering about fourth or fifth, but now we're first. Uh, as of the brand new opening this year of Berkshire Elementary off of 287, we now have 31 campuses. And, and those are the communities that we, uh, that we serve. Um, you know, and y'all know more than, more than any other council. You know, we are growing from the south to the north. We, this, this is a hotspot for her, for us, from, from Hazlet down right now is our hotspot. But even Northlake is getting hot right now. So we are seeing growth all over the place. And, you know, we have at least one student in all 14 of those municipalities. Most of them, we have a whole lot of kids. So, uh, uh, we're very honored to represent that. Uh, as, as of a couple of weeks ago, that was our, uh, that is, was our enrollment, uh, 27,852. And there's what shows you, uh, the ranking now for North Texas. And like I said, we've always been around Fornie and Frisco down there, fourth or fifth. But, uh, these last three quarters is what really, and, and I'll tell you this, uh, and I'm very proud of this. But I'm also, this is what surprised us so much, you know, we've got about 20 years of data that shows that we grow about 1,000 kids a year, between 1,000 and 1,100 kids a year is normal for us. And that's how we plan. That's how we budget. That's how we staff. This last year, this, these last three quarters, that 1,000 kids has turned into about 2,500. Uh, we have seen an immense amount of growth over these last three quarters, you know, and our board doesn't, they don't get demographic reports every year. We do it every quarter just because we have the capacity for so much growth. So we do think, uh, you know, and our demographer is somebody who's really done a great job on our numbers for a long time, for the last 20 years. And we think that 2,500 mark is going to be our new normal. And so that just, again, that just, uh, I've been a administrator, I've been a superintendent in West Texas where you're just trying to figure out which programs to cut because kids are leaving. This is a much better challenge to have, you know, just figuring out where to put kids, but it does, it does bring challenges. So I want to make sure you saw that. So now that things have kind of doubled, we're just making provisions to make sure that we have the capacity for that and we have the planning capacity for that. Um, here's what our kids look like. These are from this year's numbers. And, you know, if you're a parent or a staff member, you know, you, that, that one probably doesn't surprise you very much. When I show that statistic, those statistics on there, a lot of our parents are in our buildings. They know what our kids look like. That one doesn't surprise a lot of people. This next slide does surprise because it just shows you the diversity of our students. Our teachers serve 56 different languages, 55 languages other than English. And that just, that just tells you of the, of the challenges our teachers do, you know, our job, no matter what age a student comes to us, if they don't have command of the English language, our, our main job is to make sure they do before they leave us. And so we take that very seriously and our teachers do a phenomenal job dealing with that kind of diversity in our, in our students. For our construction update and growth update, there's, there's the outline of our, uh, of our district. All those weird little shapes on there, those are developments. Those are housing developments that are on the ground right now. The ones in greener, in that greener shade, that's where there's guys on, on the ground right now, turning dirt. They're building right now. The ones in yellow, they're planning to, they're, they're in the planning processes for it. And I'll give you a comparison. When I first started coming to you six years ago, uh, our planning department was tracking 43 developers in the district. That represents 115. So that just tells you all over the district, uh, the, the, uh, just the popularity that we have. And that's, you know, that's a testament to all of us, to the 14 communities and to the district. Uh, this is a destination district for a lot of families coming into our area. These next several slides, you know better than I do. It just, we, uh, we'll make sure, you know, we, we're, we're, um, we're tracking all those, uh, those subdivisions, whether they're in the process of building or planning to from that. And, uh, I'll, I will tell you, we're very thankful for your staff members and your, your planning processes in there. We have a great relationship with those folks and, uh, just want to, again, as, as Haslett being in one of our hotspots, it's, it takes that kind of, it takes that kind of, uh, uh, partnership to be able to do what we do and we appreciate that. Uh, the bond that we passed in 2021, $737 million, uh, uh, we're, we're, we're doing, we're rolling with that. I will tell you, you know, it's, it's being, is very busy there. There, this first slide are the major projects that we passed in the 2021 bond. The new middle school, uh, Daniel Elementary School, the, the new elementary school, 23, Hatfield, Seven Hills Pike, Northwest, all those things that we call the major projects. 2023, the fall of 2023, not this fall, but the next fall, that's going to be a very busy time for us because we're going to just, again, just for capacity issues. We're going to, we're going to open several schools that, uh, that semester. And so we're very proud of that. Make sure we're keeping on schedule to do so. There are the rest of the projects, the major projects that we have lined up, and you can see the various start times and end times on that. Um, we should have everything done by 2025, uh, from this bond, and that's what it is. And I'll tell you, uh, you know, and if Tim McClure, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Planning, he and his crew do a great job of keeping this website up. If you ever want to go in there and just click on any kind of, any of our projects, it'll show you exactly where we are. One of the, one of the major stresses, we talked about this, this, this last Monday night in our, in our board meeting. One of the major stresses right now is just the sheer prices, you know, the prices are going up. When we planned this bond through 2020, in the beginning of 2021, we were using those prices and we always adjust for inflation. But we are seeing the prices creeping up. Uh, I'll tell you, we have a, uh, we have an adjoining school district. And one of our neighbor's school district, they were bidding out a high school this last, uh, this last month or so. They budgeted for $230 million, a good size 5A high school. Uh, they, they budgeted 230 and the bids came in about 290. So a lot of districts are experiencing that and we're going to make sure we try to follow that. And, and, you know, the ultimate thing is, is giving the taxpayers exactly what we told them we would do. But, uh, it is a challenge right now with the, with the prices and, and as, uh, as the mayor alluded to, the war does not do us any favors. And hopefully that will come to a quick conclusion. That's where we are right now. If you look at that, all the red stars are the elementary schools we have in the district right now. The, the, uh, the, uh, green are middles, the blue are, are our high schools. And then the, the more yellow ones are future sites. We've already purchased that land. Uh, we reserve a certain percentage of each bond that we pass for land acquisition. So you can see where we have, uh, all the land right now for future schools. And then finally, the superintendent serves, be very proud of your board members. They, they have been working hard finding my replacement. They are actually, they've got four, four out of the five nights this week they're meeting. Um, they've narrowed 60 different applicants down to four. So they're meeting tonight and Tuesday night, and then Thursday and Friday night. And then, uh, we'll go to spring break and they'll think and pray about it. However, they do, they need to make the decision and they'll come back March the 21st. And from those last four, they'll select the one to name as what we call lone finalist. Texas school law, uh, requires school boards to actually name a lone finalist and then wait 21 days before they can actually offer that person a contract. Uh, years and years ago, Houston ISD, the president of the Board of Houston ISD went into a meeting and two hours later, he came out as the new superintendent. No public input, no teacher, I mean, no input at all. And the legislature got really mad at Houston ISD. So they now require 21 day waiting period before superintendents can get a true contract just to let the, let the communities vet that person, you know, once the, once the name is announced, everybody Googles them and tries to figure out as much as they can about them. So that gives a good three week period before they, uh, before they can actually be named as superintendent. So that's where we are right now. And, uh, what, uh, what questions can I answer for y'all about anything?
I think it's, uh, it was a very good presentation. I, I'm, uh, I'm asking, uh, uh, what are you going to do when you, uh, retire? Are you going to travel, fish, or travel and fish?
Gary, just as little as possible. I'm gonna, I'm going to pay a lot more attention to my wife. Being a superintendent's wife is just almost like being a superintendent, the stress that we go through, just, you know, just like any leadership. Uh, we are going to travel. Uh, my, my mother still lives in the Abilene area. My wife's mother lives in the central Texas area. We're going to try to move a little closer to them to, to, to give them support. And then Jill and I are just going to get in the car and just drive. We're just gonna, we're just gonna have fun for about, before we figure out what our next challenge is, we're, we're gonna have a little bit of fun.
Well, enjoy your life.
Thank you. We are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything?
I, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You just, you hear and you read about teacher retention and a lot of teachers retiring or quitting after COVID. Did you see that? And do you see that challenge going forward for, for the?
We do, we do.
And how would, how would you address it now? I know you're going to retire.
That's a, that's a, that's a great question. Uh, I'm going around the district right now and having meetings with all my faculties. I'm doing, I'm going to try to hit all 31 campuses before I leave. And, and one of my points is, you know, thanking them for being there. Because, you know, the crew that we have in place have lived through COVID and they've done a fantastic job. But I have a, I have a real fear both for Texas education and for our, for our nation's education because we have seen across the nation, more kids who are coming through colleges who are not choosing to go into teaching and the ones who are in right now getting out before retirement age. And it just, I mean, first of all, it was a, it was a fear just because when we were in COVID, not wanting to have, you know, be involved in, you know, 25, 30, 35 kids all in one little room, you know, that was just a fear of COVID. And then just the stress that it entails. Um, we have talked a lot, we're talking a lot as a state. Uh, we're working through our superintendent associations and administrative associations. We're working with college and, and really it's just getting out there and talking about the message of, of just how great of a job it really is. I mean, it's always been a stressful job. Classroom teaching, there's no other stressful job that I feel is out there than classroom teachers. But we're just trying to really make sure the kids understand we, we need them. We're going to, there's, there's going to be jobs out there. I, I talked to about, I talked to about 40 students last week who are in our teacher prep programs and make sure that they understand it's a very gratifying job. It's a very honorable job and, and we need them coming in there. We specifically in Northwest, we've got to do a better job of compensation. We're, we're, we're kind of reevaluating our budget over the next three years to make sure we can up the, the salaries and benefits for our crew to make sure that they can take care of their families the way they need to. Um, also working on just true support, uh, the, the support positions we have in the district are critical. You know, we have 1,700 teachers, but we have about 1,300 support staff who, you know, wrap their arms around those teachers and being able to make sure that they have the support that they need, both in, both instructionally, operationally, financially, things like that. So we're doing several different things, trying both to make sure that we retain the staff that we have now, but also bringing them. My, my HR department is right now starting their trek around the state to job fairs and trying to get those kids to understand and, and all of them to understand that, uh, we need them, uh, our children need them. And it's gonna, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be back to normal, you know, whatever normal looked like before March of 2020. You know, we're going to get back there. We've just got to, we just got to bear down and do it. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Just pull on that thread a little bit further down toward kids because we, I don't think we hear it so much here in Texas, but hear about the degradation of standards um, with students. Um, I think you've heard some things, like I've heard one a couple of weeks ago with preschool where they no longer, you know, at age of three, they only need to know 25 words versus 30 words. I mean, is there spin because of COVID, additional degradation? And, you know, again, what is that new normal?
Really? No, not in my opinion. I mean, we have in Texas, um, I feel we have a, a really phenomenal, and this comes from the, this is at the state level down. I think we have a really great curriculum. Um, sometimes I think we have too much that, that is asked on our teachers, you know, that, that we don't have the ability to really teach and drive that, that, uh, knowledge down because we've got such a width, uh, breadth of information. But I, I'm really feel good about what our expectations are for kids. Just that there is, the, the learning loss we've, we've sustained over the last two years is real. We couldn't have missed all the instructional time, the one-on-one, the, the in-person, you, you can't go through two years like we've gone through and there not be learning loss. And that's from the kids that are taking every AP course that we have in our high schools, all the way down to our most struggling student we have. There has been learning loss and that's the, that is the biggest challenge that we're going to be addressing probably for the next two to three years is trying to get, first of all, trying to get kids back to where we were before March of 2020 and then moving them forward to where they need to be. So, uh, you know, some of the things that I do have an issue with at the state is just that they, they think, uh, they sometimes think testing is more important than teaching. Now, we've, we've talked about that for, to them for years. There, there needs to be assessments. But I, 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 I put more faith in the assessments my, our teachers give than what the state gives. So the testing is very important, but truly what we call tier one learning, meaning the classroom teachers in front of our kids and, or his kids, and they're doing their thing every day. That's tier one instruction and that's the best instruction they have. That's what we've got to support. Um, so the, the content and the expectations I feel are, are where they need to be. We just have to have the dedicated folks in front of the students there every day to, to get it to them and just really facilitating that learning, you know? Gone are the times where a teacher just gives kids instructions, just sitting out there in front and just giving notes and giving notes. It's really about facilitating. Now, we're, we all work in groups now. There's, there's very few of us now who don't depend on working groups, just like your leadership team here. You, you succeed as a team. And that's what we try to mirror in schools is they've got to be able to work with a team, no, no matter who they are, where they come from. They got to work with each other and be able to do that. And, and a really great teacher understands how to facilitate that. And, and, and when they're really doing their thing, that, that learning loss is going to come back up. We've just got to have more of those master teachers to do it. All right, folks. Well, just, uh, um, while I'm here, when I'm not here, um, this relationship is very, very important to us. And if there's anything that we can do on behalf of the district, anything that we can do to better support you, only thing you have to do is ask and we will do everything we can. So we just, we appreciate the relationship. Okay?
Dr. Warren, I, uh, wish you and your wife all the best. I know as we all do. And, uh, only thing I got to say is, uh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Now I'm sitting here reminiscing, uh, being in first grade, my first day. Oh, my gosh. Well, let's go to, uh, item four, says participation and comments. Uh, I understand we have three speakers. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the, uh, our first speaker is Mr. Hazelwood, LaTerra Development LLC. Uh, speakers, as you, uh, come up, if you would give your name and your address.
Roughly remaining in our LaTerra project located off of John Day Road. So, um, before I get started, just quickly, I, I was hearing all the languages and everything they were saying and name pronunciations. And I was reminded the first time I ever went to Germany, every time I'd go anyplace, they would call me Ozzel Wood instead of Hazelwood because the H was silent. So finally, after about three days of that, I'm like, the lady asked me, what's your name? I said, Ozzel Wood. She goes, I don't speak German. So I'm like, well, I can't win for losing here. But, uh, thanks for your time tonight, um, mayor, members of the city council. So a little bit about our history here, we've got a long history in the city of Hazlet, uh, and in the county of Hazlet, or excuse me, in ETJ of Hazlet. But we assembled about 450 acres, starting in about 2005. We purchased the, uh, corner, the commercial corner of FM 156 and Avondale Hazlet Road. Uh, worked tirelessly with the city and the city's economic development director at that point in time to figure out how we could get utilities when things were as green as they were. It was as rural as it was and to try to get retailers to come to a little tiny town of Hazlet. But we all worked together. We had a great partnership. And so what you see today out there between the 7-Eleven, the, uh, Sonic, the Anytime Fitness, the medical, those were just one at a time deals that we all fight and scrap for and tried to figure out a way to make it work to get some services out here that people were telling us they wanted. And we knew we would have a significant investment in our LaTerra project. So I hope that as you see, I'm able to stand here tonight and say, look at what we've done, not promising you what we're going to do. So I hope everyone is pleased with what they've seen with the, the expansion of John Day Road. Um, the divided medium, our landscaping, our walls, we take a lot of time picking out everything from the way the walls look. So they look in 20 years as good as they did, you know, 20 years prior when we put it in. A lot of things look really dated and other developments. I really try to be not timeless in my vision, but I do try to be very mindful of quality and what things are going to look like. Because if we put our name on it, we want it to be something we're going to be proud of. So we're proud of the way our development looks. Um, I'm very happy with the entry, all the walls, all the little ornate, uh, you know, pots and planters and all the little things that we try to do, even our little park that we built. Our little million and a half dollar park with the pool, everything. I just think it looks really, really good. Sometimes you look at things, you're like, well, I wish we'd have done better, but I think we did a good job. So, um, anyway, I hope that everyone is pleased with what we've done. So what we're requesting tonight is that we would be placed on the docket on March the 21st to be able to discuss LaTerra South, which is approximately 96 acres, uh, backs up to the railroad track. We only own the portion that lies in Hazlet East to ETJ. We do not own any of the property that is in Fort Worth. And so we just like to ask respectfully for your consideration. The quality in our project that we're proposing will not change. We've actually relaxed the density a little bit. The larger homes have done better than what everybody thought. It's exceeded everybody's expectation with our 75 foot lots. Our smaller lot product are now, believe it or not, approaching $500,000 on our smaller lot product. And that was one of the things we battled years ago for our development plan was to make sure that the price point of the homes did not bring down the values in Hazlet. And we've actually helped bring the average up. So we're averaging over half a million dollars in all of our houses in LaTerra that you see going up now. And I anticipate, um, the number continuing to push up because we have a waitlist. So anyway, we fight hard for quality. We look at every house plan the builders submit. We handpick our builders. But, uh, we see it to be a seamless transition from where we're at in LaTerra now to LaTerra South, not compromising in any way, shape or form. So I just respectfully ask for your consideration that we be placed on the docket for further discussion on the 21st. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelwood. Uh, second, next I have, uh, Corey Admire.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Corey Admire. Uh, my address is 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218. I'm with Shu Bensura, PLLC. Uh, we are, represent LaTerra Development LLC, who, as Gary said, is the owner of about 160 acres within the city limits and about 96, 97 acres in the city's ETJ. Um, I'd like to just, just point out that section 1.03.001 of the Hazlet City Code of Ordinances, which is also available to all citizens on the city's website and that was adopted by the city council on January 6th, 2014, states that a member of the city council is entitled to have a minimum of one item listed on the agenda for each meeting of the city council. Based on the length of the agenda, additional items per member will be allowed at the discretion of the mayor. To have that item listed on the agenda for a meeting of the city council, a member of the city council shall notify the mayor, city administrator, or city secretary at his or her desire to add an item, preferably by email, at least 10 days prior to the date of meeting. Any exception to the 10 days is at the discretion of the mayor. This notification should include the date of the city council meeting at which the member desires the item to be listed on the agenda, the topic, and a brief description, which clearly defines the nature and scope of the matter to be addressed. When a topic has been specifically requested by an individual council member or the body of the council, neither the mayor or city staff may remove the topic from the agenda. As requested by Gary and in my letter sent to each of the, each of the council members dated February 28th, 2022, I respectfully request that when agenda item, tonight's agenda item 11, I respectfully request that when agenda item, tonight's agenda item 11, which calls for future agenda items, is addressed this evening, that a council member requests that the ETJ development agreement related to the LaPrel property, the 97 acres in your ETJ, it was, which was first submitted to the city for review in February of 2021 and most recently in December of 2021, be placed on the March 21st city council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Admire. Next I have Mr. Al Burton.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Good to see all of you again. My name is Al Burton. Address is 1,000 Texan Trail and Suite 200 over in Grapevine, representing LaTerra Development. Um, as Gary and, and Corey referred to, we have, uh, property in the city limits of Hasslet, and there's also a 97 acre tract in the ETJ of Hasslet, uh, south of, south of that property. The 97 acre tract is really kind of what I wanted to focus on regarding water and sewer. Uh, this is what we call the LaPrel Track. It lies within the city's, um, water and sanitary CCN, the certificate of convenience and necessity, which that's a good thing because that grants exclusive right to this, uh, for the city to really charge perpetual ongoing fees for water and sewer services, providing those services are actually there. In exchange for that right, the, the TCEQ has, uh, regulations that require the city to provide adequate and continuous service to those areas within the CCN boundary. So in addition to the statutory, uh, obligations that are in existence, there's also a contractual obligation that I think most of you are all aware of. And that's, that was an obligation created in a prior agreement that relates to the same LaPrel tract. And a copy of that agreement, I think, has been provided to all the city council members previously. So under that agreement, uh, the city received the, uh, right of way to extend John Day Road southward down to Blue Mound Road. And, uh, that road, um, is an extension of the four lane, uh, boulevard that was built in the phase one of LaTerra. As well as the city received easements to bring water and sewer, uh, to the LaPrel property, which is in the ETJ. In return, the city is obligated to extend the water and sanitary sewer, uh, connections into that property. So because of those two existing obligations, city obligations, we're respectfully requesting that, uh, like the previous two, uh, conversations with you folks, that on agenda item number 11, maybe it calls for the future agenda items to be addressed this evening, that the council would direct the staff to include in the engineer's report an update on the status of the water and the sewer extension obligations that are required to be constructed under the agreements that I've mentioned before that relate specifically to that 97 acre tract. And then further request the engineer to provide regular estimated updates as to the expected date of completion for that project. So we appreciate your time this evening, all three of us, and we just appreciate, appreciate that. And we thank you very much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. All right. Is there any other requests that we have to speak?
I have no more requests.
Very good. Let's move to item five, community interest. Five A, uh, Friday, March 11th, 2022, Carter Blood Care Drive, Blood Drive. Be at the Hasslet Library Parking Lot from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Um, please, uh, roll up your sleeve and, uh, do what you can. Five B, Saturday, April 30th, 2022, mark this date. It's the Volunteer Appreciation Banquet. It'll be held at the Heritage Baptist Church here in Hasslet at 6:00 PM. And, uh, this is where we'll gather together in, uh, honor and, and, uh, in appreciation for all the, uh, volunteers that we do have in Hasslet. Boards and council members and et cetera. Without the volunteers, you know, it's just, uh, couldn't run the city. Item six, updates on active, uh, items, projects and event recaps, uh, community park projects. Mr. Rogers.
Mayor and council, good evening. Um, back in February on, uh, the ninth, at the, uh, regular scheduled park and recreation board meeting, uh, we took in the concept plans and estimated costs for the projects in Hasslet Community Park, uh, Gamma Park and lighting of the, uh, Tapp Trail. And got their input. They discussed about different things, looked at some things and gave us their comments back. So we're ready to move to the next step, which is next, bringing it forward to this board for y'all to go over it. But y'all get the fun part. Y'all got to figure out how we're going to pay for all of it. So funding's going to be the biggest part of y'all's discussion. Uh, so y'all get to just make decisions. Can we afford it? What do we cut? What do we keep? So that's going to be coming, hopefully the yeah, probably going to be more like April, but we'll maybe try to get it to y'all as soon as possible. We want y'all to all know about that. And those of y'all will be seeing that coming forward and y'all hopefully be sharpening your pencils because it's, some of it is quite expensive. So then y'all can direct us on where to go next.
Are you trying to prepare us for sticker shop?
Possibly. As there, as you heard the superintendent talk, the cost of everything is going up and construction costs are going up faster than you can keep up with the cost of concrete. Everything keeps, seems like every day. Cost of PVC pipe has went up eight times in the last week and a half.
No doubt. All right. How about, uh, equipment purchases?
Uh, well, we missed out on the big vac truck, so we, but we are working the discussions out with them now for placing the order for what we want. Uh, we're hoping to have that process done within the next week to two. So then we'll have the final cost of what that will be and be able to place that order. And then hopefully the next 31, we think it's coming in 30 days. The other orders that we have for the TracO and stuff, uh, should be within the next three months. So over the next three months, we may have some parties and be very excited at least two or three more times. So those are coming. So we know they're going on the way.
Very good. Counsel, you got any, uh, questions for, uh, Mr. Rogers? Good. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Let's go to seven, seven A, approval of the, uh, February 22nd, 2022 regular city council meeting minutes.
Mayor Holsey, I move to approve the, um, council meeting minutes as presented.
Motion is made to approve the, uh, meeting minutes as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second, real call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, counsel. It's called item eight, public hearings, ordinances, resolution and action items. Eight A, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act regarding approving an ordinance annexing an approximate 4.127 acre portion of Blue Mound Road East right of way into the city of Hasslet, Texas for all municipal purposes and approving an agreement regarding services after annexation for the territory. Mr. Chambers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item you have before you is about two years in the coming. Uh, this was the, uh, result of Brett Pedego's developments. He agreed to take that giant curve out of Blue Mound. Uh, so as that was rerouted, what was left was an area of a little over four acres that, uh, it still remains in the county and the county requested that the city, uh, execute an agreement to annex that in the future. Uh, it gave two years for that to occur and we are coming up on that two-year period. Uh, there are no houses in that area. If you look on your, let's say, page 52, yes, right up there. You can tell it's just the abandoned part of what was previously paved for Blue Mound Road. Again, there are no houses. There's really not a cost to service that area. It's just an annexation for that, uh, agreement with the county. I'll answer any questions you may have, or you can go to the public here.
Counsel, do we have any questions? All right, very good. Uh, let's go to item two, uh, public hearing. Open a public hearing at 7:41 PM. Is there anyone like to speak to this topic? Do we have anybody online? All right. There's no one in the chambers wishing to speak. Uh, there is no one on line wishing to speak, so I close the public hearing. Item three, discussion, counsel. All right, so we always, uh, this is something we need to annex this portion of the road into the city limits of Hasslet. And with that then, no other, uh, questions or discussion, uh, I'll go to item four. Consideration and action. And I'll take a motion when you desire.
Mayor Holsey, um, Councilmember Ricketts, I move to approve the ordinance annexing approximately 4.127 acre portion of Blue Mound Road East right of way into the city of Hasslet.
Motion is made to approve the, uh, 4.127 acre portion of Blue Mound Road East right of way into the city of Hasslet. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I have a second.
There is a second, real call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, counsel. Eight B, discuss, consider an act on accepting the resignation of Jim Quinn as city administrator. Is there any discussion? And I'll entertain a, uh, motion then.
Mayor Holsey, I make, I make a motion to accept the resignation of James Quinn as city administrator.
Motion is made to accept the resignation of James Quinn as city administrator. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second, a real call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, I got an eight C, discuss, consider an act regarding appointment of interim city attorney. I would say this also have this listed in executive, uh, uh, session if you desire. We can go into executive session after, you know, in a, in a bit here, which is next thing coming up. Then you can act on this or you can act now. What, uh, let me just poll the, uh, also, would you, uh, rather go into the executive session first? Okay. If not, it, uh, someone, uh, if, uh, does we have any questions? Let me, uh, describe, um, our, uh, the, uh, toes and, um, Mr. Albon of toes, who was our former city attorney had resigned. And, uh, I'd been, uh, I knew of the firm Messer, Fort and McDonald and have for, uh, for some time. And when this occurred, I approached him to be the, uh, interim city attorney. Um, Messer, Fort and, uh, McDonald, they have three offices. Their pri- their corporate offices in, uh, Frisco. They also have an office in Avaline and one in Austin. Their expertise, their sole purpose in life is municipal law. Um, the, uh, primary, uh, attorney assigned to the city of Hasslet was in his interim with, uh, um, Brenda McDonald, one of the, uh, founding partners. Um, Mr. Drake is sitting in for Brenda this evening. Uh, but Mr. Drake, he himself has quite, uh, um, background is, uh, he was, uh, a city attorney in the, in Denton, Texas for 31 years. So their experience and background is rather extensive. Um, so just a, uh, um, brief description of them. Um, so if there's any questions, we can entertain those. Mr. Drake would certainly, uh, answer any questions. And, uh, if there are none, I would entertain a motion for interim city attorney.
My only question was, as if it's, we appoint them as interim, what's the timeframe? As a, as interim, is there a designation for time?
Uh, there's no, I, I've got a designation, but I would imagine, you know, within a month or two at minimum. I mean, why I say at minimum, but, uh, I wouldn't envision any longer than that.
Mayor Holsey.
Yes.
I move to appoint, um, uh, interim city attorney as suggested.
Motion is made to, uh, appoint the interim city attorney and I'll call out the Messer, Fort and McDonald, uh, law firm as the, uh, city attorney. Is there a sec- interim city attorney? Is there a second?
I second.
There is a second. Any further questions or discussion? I'll take a real call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, counsel. Uh, at this time, uh, we'll go into executive session. The city council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda as authorized by section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. Additionally, pursuant to provisions of 551 of the Texas Government Code, city council may adjourn into executive session in accordance with the authority contained in A9A or section 551072 Government Code, deliberations regarding real property, purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, very specifically property acquisition for public facilities. And section 551074 Government Code personnel discuss appointment. Employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee or hear complaint or discharge against officer or employee in the executive session unless officer or employee request public hearing. Uh, specifically interim city attorney, uh, to also the city administrator. Uh, at this time, I will, um, adjourn the open session. It is 7:48 PM. And if we could come back in, uh, five minutes or make that at, uh, 7:55 PM, we'll take a short break and we'll convene into executive session. And all members of the public, I'll invite you into the conference room. Would that be sufficient? Okay, I, uh, reconvene the open session of, uh, this meeting, uh, March 7th, 2022, at 8:31 PM. Uh, the quorum is present. Mayor Pro Tim Marl, now our councilmember Nahera, councilmember Clark, and councilmember Ricketts are in the chambers, and councilmember Rob is teleconference. Item 10, take, uh, consider and take any action resulting from executive session. There are none. Item 11, future agenda items. Any future agenda item?
This is Councilman, Councilman Rob, I have one.
Uh, count, or Mayor Pro Tim Marl spoke up first. All right, go ahead, Councilmember Rob.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, to place on the, uh, next meeting agenda to discuss, consider, and act on the development agreement, uh, and, uh, um, concept plan for the 97 acre tract in the Hasslet ETJ known as La Terra South.
Okay. Uh, I would like to tell the council that, uh, the, uh, our attorney firm has these documents in review and request that they be able to have sufficient time to finish review of their documents before it's on the agenda. You still hold your request?
Well, I, uh, yes, I, yes, I do. We, we don't have to act if we're not ready, but, uh, I'd like to, uh, see the discussion, uh, and consideration and possibly action. It can always be continued on the next meeting.
Very good. Any other items? All right, then, let's move to.
One additional question on that. Um, I know you asked about the attorney firm having the proper time, but I think there was also a request for the engineers to review the documents.
That's true. They, they have it to, for their review as well.
So should we split? So shall we split? Is there a way to split these out? Or so is it two different agenda items? I guess maybe that might be back to the.
Well, once if you, if you consider an act on it, it's here regardless if the engineers have finished their review or not. So I'll just, I'll keep you status, uh, whether both legal and engineering review has been finished. Okay, and you can, uh, uh, take that in consideration when this agenda item comes up.
I just want to clarify. Were you specifying, I know it was mentioned earlier about the engineering report, like some are, engineering giving an update to us on, I believe, is the water and sewer improvements. Is that, okay?
That's a different, uh, it's not the La Terra South, uh, developer agreement. That's a separate document. There's another document out there called the La Prel Trust. And that was where this right of way was donated in exchange for a asset, building a road and extending water lines. That's a separate topic altogether. Those are two different documents. Um, but the La Prel, um, trust, uh, though, or not the, the La Terra South folks have requested that they be both put on there.
Okay, so I can add the features in. I'm requesting the La Prel Trust Engineers Report for Water and Sewer. That would be separate.
Uh, it, uh, you like it for a staff report? Yes, that's what, we can do that.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be good.
Okay, so, uh, consider and act on the developer agreement and staff report on the La Prel Trust. All right, anything else? All right, then. Let's go to item 12, adjourn. May I have a motion?
Mayor Holsey, it's Councilmember Ricketts. I move to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, counsel.